Welcome to Superintendent's Corner. My name's Frank Lazare. I'm the superintendent of the Boardman Schools. Will this winter ever be over? That's the question that comes up every day when I come into work. Unfortunately, it's been probably the coldest February since I've been superintendent, and unfortunately, we have expended all of our five calamity days at this point in winter. The end of winter is nowhere in sight. Oftentimes, March brings on that freezing mix and slippery roads in the morning. I apologize for as many or the many two-hour delays we have had. However, at this point, having had five calamity days, when we go into our sixth calamity day, that means that we will be extending our school year. At present, our last school day in June is Wednesday, June 10th. If we have any more snow days, calamity days this year, we will have to go into June 11th or 12th, or maybe even the following week. So let's just keep our fingers crossed that spring is around the corner and that we won't have any more calamity days off. I know our students out there are thinking differently, but again, we have material to cover, we've got students to educate, tests to take, and this winter weather will be over soon. Just as a reminder, now, some of you out there might be saying, "Well, I thought they went from days to hours of instruction." I did talk about that in past shows, and yes, that is true. The state of Ohio has permitted school districts or mandated that school districts convert from school days to school hours, and yes, the Boardman School Day is longer than the state minimum. However, because we entered into an agreement with our teachers' association prior to June 30th, we are still on school days and not school hours. So for three more years, or two and a half more years, we will be on school days, and then at that point, we will renegotiate school hours in our contract. So again, at this point, we've used up all of our calamity days. Some of our neighboring districts, I know Poland, for example, I believe, because of some difficulties they had with utilities in the middle school, they have used eight days, so they're going to have to make some days up there in their calendar. Moving on, the new state budget is a hot topic out there. I know that the governor proposed the budget back in January. The media immediately jumped on this. They interviewed me, and they said something to the effect of, gee, Boardman really makes out on this new budget. You get $1.6 million more. But they did not tell the rest of the story. Boardman, because of all the businesses here in our community, the car dealerships, the mall, and the many businesses, Boardman's the center, the hub of commercial business here in Mahoney County. Because of that, we benefit from, we used to benefit from something called tangible personal property tax. About five or six years ago, the state of Ohio did away with tangible personal property tax, and they replaced it with something called the commercial activity tax. And what they did was, they lowered the amount of tangible personal property tax that many of the businesses paid. They introduced the commercial activity tax, and the Boardman Schools and Boardman Township, we receive less money from that old tax, the tangible personal property tax. As a matter of fact, the township totally was eliminated. So a tax that the township had collected for years and years, the state just wiped out. And so the money that they used to get, state of Ohio, now keeps that in Columbus, and they distribute it however they wish. While the Boardman Schools, we would have been collecting about $4.5 million through tangible personal property. For the last four years, we have been held harmless, and we collect about $2.5 million. And so with this new budget, the state is phasing that out, so that hold harmless money, that $2.5 million, basically will be eliminated within the next four years. And where's the money going? Well, that hold harmless that we used to collect is going back in Columbus. So we may be receiving $1.6 million more, but we will be losing $2.5 million from the state in that hold harmless that we used to receive from the state of Ohio, the old tangible personal property. So it's interesting, and it's early. This is only February, the end of February, into March, a lot will take place between now and June 30th. This new biennium budget won't take place or won't be enacted until the end of June or early July. So the House has to get their version, the Senate has to get their version, and then they will come up with some amended bill that the governor will have to sign off on. So many months to go. There'll be lots and lots of debate, lots and lots of people going into Columbus to testify. We'll see how things come out in the end. In other news, I received a call from some of the executives at St. Elizabeth Hospital here in Boardman, and the hospital continues to expand. And one of the problems the hospital has run into is parking. And they had talked about a parking deck and a few other things, and they came to an agreement with the YMCA, and they're switching some properties around and moving some things, and they're adding some parking for the hospital. And unfortunately, it's going to negatively impact the Boardman Schools. The Boardman Schools bus garage, which is located on McClure Road, it would be very, very expensive for us to have to move our bus garage because of, you know, that amount of money. It would probably cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million to buy a parcel of land, to build another bus garage. So we're looking at alternatives currently. That is a very, very, as you all know, a very, very busy sector of Boardman, that McClure Road. It's difficult for our buses to get in and out when you've got traffic that you're dealing with, both for the YMCA and the hospital. We currently use a road right next to our bus garage, which really doesn't belong to us. That road will be taken over by the YMCA. It will be a YMCA access road, and we'll be talking to the folks from the Y and from the hospital to see if we can get access to that road, because if that road is no longer available to us, currently, our bus drivers park on that strip, and we also pull our buses out on that road. If that is no longer available to us, we're kind of landlocked, and we can't even use our bus garage, because there's not enough room, there's not enough turning radius, and we would have to do some major revamping of access to our bus garage. So we will be speaking to, as I said, the folks at YMCA, the folks at the hospital, to see if we can come up with some sort of agreement to either move our bus garage or to get access to McClure Road from that driveway that doesn't really belong to us. It's a complicated situation. We want to be good neighbors, good partners, but it is a dangerous situation with our buses trying to pull out and cars trying to pull into the hospital and pull into the Y. We don't want to be obstructionist here on the part of the school district, but, you know, we don't have $3 million to be building a new bus garage. So we are going to be looking at alternative sites for our buses, for our bus garage, and Board of Education will be talking about this probably over the next month or two months, to see what we can do to help out the hospital, to help out the Y, and to make it safer for our buses to get in and out, and so forth. So more to follow in the future. The state of Ohio, there's some groups out there who are looking at having a constitutional amendment for the legalization of marijuana. I stand up today and tell the public I am against this. I think it is full of problems. It sends a wrong message to our youth. I know that I've had a young lady that serves on one of our committees, our parent advisory, our parent outreach committee. The young lady's name is Angela McClellan, a former student of mine from back in, early in my career. Angie has spoken passionately to our parent advisory group. She comes to us from the Coalition for a Drug-Free Mahoney County, and I've invited Angie to come in to speak to PTA on March 3rd at our monthly PTA council meeting. Angie will be coming in at 9:30, speaking to PTA at our meeting, I believe it's at 9:30 on Tuesday, March 3rd, and she will be talking about these proposed constitutional amendments. There are actually a couple out there. One is for the legalization of marijuana for medicinal purposes, medical purposes, and a second one is for recreational purposes. Right now, they have been trying to secure signatures for these ballot initiatives, and these would be for a change in our constitutional amendment. Just this past week, I know that there were some questions about the wording, and they had to go back and redo the wording, because the state auditor came up and said that the wording was bad, or the attorney general, rather, said the wording was bad, so they're rewording those petitions. But be on the lookout for those petitions, and I will continue to talk about those, and perhaps I could even have Angela on my Superintendent's Corner in the near future or prior to that ballot initiative taking place. So I'm just giving the public a heads up. I think there have been problems in Colorado, problems in Washington, in terms of some unintended consequences of legalization of marijuana. Moving on, at our board meeting here in February, one of our cheerleading advisors for the middle school, Ms. Gina Stevens, did a great job in presenting an idea to the Board of Education regarding cheerleading squads in the middle school. Back when I first became an educator, back in 1970s, that was before Title IX, where there were not, back in those days, there were not equal opportunities for females as far as participation in athletics. Since then, Title IX has done a wonderful job making sure that there was equal access to facilities, equal opportunities for females to participate, young women to participate in athletics. And so basically, there are just as many opportunities for females as there are for males. Well, Ms. Stevens brought to our attention that because of our policies, we actually exclude some of our girls from participating in cheerleading, because they, to be a cheerleader, under our current policy, it precludes a young lady going out, for example, for girls' basketball in the winter, because she has signed up or she has made the cheerleading squad. Our current policy states that if you are going to be a cheerleader, you have to make a commitment to both cheering in the fall, for the fall sports, football, and the winter sports, basketball, meaning that if a young lady wanted to go out for, for example, girls' basketball, she couldn't do that. Under the proposed policy, a young lady could be either a fall cheerleader, a winter cheerleader, or she could cheer for both squads. So if a young lady, for example, wanted to go out for the volleyball squad in the fall, she could cheer in the winter for basketball. Or vice versa, if she wanted to cheer for football in the fall, she could go out for basketball in the winter sports. So Ms. Stevens said this is a great change, and it's going to help our girls become even more involved, and it's not going to shut them out from participating in a sport because they want to cheer. So, you know, kudos to Ms. Stevens. She presented this to the board in February. We had a kind of a packed house, because we were honoring so many students for participation and for awards that they received. Ms. Stevens did a great job there, and the Board of Education gave her the thumbs up. And so there will be a change, and it will be at both middle schools, a change in the middle school cheerleading policy. If you wanted to know more about that policy, if I haven't been clear enough, more information will be going home, because I'm told that cheerleading tryouts do begin in March, and we have told both middle schools that you must be on the same page, you must do this the same way, and give our young women equal opportunities in both middle schools. So more information will be going home when cheerleading tryouts begin in March. I believe that is at Boardman Glenwood Middle School, and a bit later in the spring at Boardman Center Middle School. The month of March is chock full of music events. We have coming up on March 4th, the winter band concert at the high school at the B-PAC on Wednesday, March 4th, and that's once again for the band. Believe it or not, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, our band will be marching in that, and that will be Sunday, March 15th at noon. We have Project Mayhem. I can't say enough good about Project Mayhem. I know when this idea was posed by Mr. Amundall and Ms. Vary, probably it's been four or five years now, I didn't really know what it was all about, but kids are excited about it. They have electronic violins and electronic cellos and all sorts of guitars. It's kind of a page out of the electronic orchestras that you have out there, that they play rock and roll music. It's really a lot of fun, and a lot of our young people get excited about performing, and a lot of our young people get excited about going to this. So it's going to be on Friday, March 20th at 7:00 p.m. Project Mayhem, be there. They have a light show going on and a lot of great music. And finally, one of my favorites, we have our BHS Jazz Fest. And I don't know who the guest will be for this year's Jazz Fest, but Mr. Ruggieri usually has some local or some former jazz performer come in, and Mr. Ruggieri has all sorts of contacts out there in the jazz world. So that's at the B-PAC also, March 24th, and Mr. Ruggieri and I had a conversation here a couple days ago, and his jazz kids will be going to New York City and performing at Trump Tower again this year. So kudos to kids participating in Jazz 1, 2, and 3. Super job. Well, that wraps up another edition of Superintendent's Corner. I hope it wasn't too overwhelming, lots of topics today, and it's all good. I take my hat off to our community for the support of our many programs here. Take my hat off to our parents and students who do a super job in keeping Boardman a great place to call home and a great place to educate our children. Thanks again for tuning in to BSTN Superintendent's Corner, your link between the school and community.
Hello and welcome to this February edition of Boardman School Board Report. I'm Miranda Canacci for Boardman Schools Television Network. Today's program will feature the February Board of Education meeting. I'm joined by school board member Mrs. Kim Poma, who will share the highlights of the meeting. Welcome, Mrs. Poma.
Thank you, Miranda.
All right, so the regular February meeting of the school board took place at Boardman High School on Monday, February 23rd, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. And Mr. Fred Davis called the meeting to order.
Fred Davis is our president this year. Vicki Davis is the vice president this year, and we met at Boardman High School. We're rotating school buildings, so we were lucky to see Boardman High School this year, met in the choral music room, and we enjoy the rotation.
All right. Were all board members present?
Mr. Mark Folks was not present, but the president, vice president, board member John Landers, and myself were there, so we had a quorum.
All right. Mrs. Poma, did anyone address the school board?
Not that night. We have a policy that allows citizens to address the board on matters that concern them, just five minutes of an opportunity to tell us anything that they're proud of or concerned about. We did not have anybody address the board that night, but we did have a lot of students and parents in attendance, so that was exciting.
Mr. Fred Davis went over the consent agenda. Can you highlight what was discussed?
Sure. The consent agenda is one motion that covers a bunch of matters, most of them routine items that the board is responsible for, like expenditures, where our investments are held, and things like that. Also, routine personnel matters.
And I see we have a retirement in order for our schools.
Yes, Susan Ballantyne has been with us for a long time. She is retiring from her position as the cafeteria manager at Center Middle School, and we certainly wish her well. Gina Rice is also taking a parental leave of absence. She's a sixth-grade science teacher, and she's taking her first year parental leave, and I'm sure she'll enjoy her time with her child.
Yes. And I see we have a recent certificated staff appointment.
Yes. Reema Batar was recently hired to take the position of Robert Hazel, who retired from Glenwood Middle School. She is a Boardman grad, and she's been a permanent sub for this school year, and she'll be teaching seventh-grade math.
All right. Now, Mrs. Poma, can you tell us a little bit about the staff supplementals relating to coaching?
Yeah, we have supplemental contracts for teachers that are on staff or off staff, meaning they aren't employees of the district, and also volunteer supplementals. And it's how we fill our ranks a lot with the coaching staffs, because there are parents or other community residents that are just interested in those sports. Michelle Peters is on staff, and will be coaching the freshman softball team again. We had a number of assistant coaches appointed for spring sports, track, softball, and baseball. And off-staff volunteers, it's always nice to have people that just give their time. We approved Mark Calatti as the high school volunteer baseball coach. Sherry Gaps will be leading the girls' lacrosse team, and David Mary will be leading the boys' lacrosse team. Those are new sports to Boardman Schools. And Robert Jones is volunteering to coach softball. Yeah, we also approve a list of substitute teachers. This month, we had a short list of subs that we approved, but we're always looking to fill our substitute teacher ranks, because they're hard to come by. So when we find good ones, we want to approve them and use them as much as we can.
I see it's that time of year for the community education classes.
Yes, community education is just a program that we offer to residents of the community to participate in, continuing their own interest in education. And we approved the staff for that and the courses. This year, it includes, I think Edie Davidson, our retired art teacher, is making jewelry again. We have a woodworking class that our superintendent, Mr. Lazare, is participating in. There are two computer classes. Retired teacher Carl Rubino is teaching an acrylics class, and it's always well-attended. We keep it going. It's self-supporting, and it's a great opportunity to learn a new skill.
All right, that's great. Now, what was discussed by Mr. Santilli, treasurer, during the treasurer's business?
Sure. There are two school employees that report directly to the Board of Education. One is the treasurer, Rich Santilli, and the other is our superintendent, Frank Lazare, and they both report to us matters that we need to approve at each of our meetings. Mr. Santilli only had one item this month. He formed a new account. It's an account that the funds for the Boardman Schools Fund for Educational Excellence will flow through. That's basically the Boardman Schools Foundation, where we offer grants to teachers who have great ideas for something in their classroom that funds don't necessarily allow them to do. So now those funds will go right through their own account, and we can keep a record of them, and the kids can all benefit.
All right. Let's go to superintendent's business by Mr. Lazare.
Yeah, he has a number of items that he always brings to us. We passed a resolution for Right to Read Week. Right to Read is a national program. It's usually held at Boardman Schools in May, but because of the testing schedule this year, we moved it up, so it's, I think, in March. The elementary schools go great guns. I don't know if you remember Right to Read Week?
Oh, I do. It was great.
Where you would sit in a tent and read a book, and anything we can do to make reading fun at all of our buildings. We also, he presented us the summer school schedule, so we also approved that. It's an opportunity for kids to remediate or add extra credits, sometimes tuition-based, sometimes at no charge, in a number of curricular areas. And we also approved the Mahoney County Educational Service Center Agreement. The Educational Service Center, or ESC, is located in Canfield, but it serves all of the schools in the county, except the city schools, and they provide services that are kind of collaborative or collective, that we may not hire a full-time staff person to do, like hearing support, or, and so we approved that contract with them.
And now, we're happy to recognize many students this month.
Always.
BHS Parent-Teacher-Student Association 2014 Reflections winners. In visual arts, freshman Mackenzie Paco, first place; freshman Anna Sherman, second place; freshman Nadine Gabriel, third place; freshman Annabelle Adkins, honorable mention. For photography, sophomore Erica Sharilla, first place; freshman Molly Slater, second place; freshman Mariah Ricardi, third place; and freshman Madeline Hubert, honorable mention. For film production, we had freshman Genesis Speller take first place. In dance choreography, freshman Hannah Brewer took first place. In literature, freshman John Anzavina was in first place; freshman Brian Cordupel in second place; freshman Brianna Lidle in third place; and sophomore Maria Sarah with an honorable mention.
If I could interject there, Miranda. The PTSA is Parent-Teacher-Student Association. We knew it as PTA for years, but at the high school a few years ago, they opted to include students. So there are actually student officers that go to the meetings, and they have ideas and help the PTA plan events that would benefit the whole school. And that cultural arts program has been around for a long time. Those first-place winners will go on to state and national competition with the PTA and are eligible for scholarships.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
All right. For the BHS Ocean Bowl team, they were third-place winners of the Penguin Bowl held at Youngstown State University. The members of the team were senior Mackenzie Allen, senior Megan Banks, senior Luke Corabia, senior Kay Moyer, senior Matthew Stark, junior Catalina Courier, junior David Suarez, freshman Alexandra Marar, and freshman Pernav Podman, and the coach was Heather Moran. At the Glenwood Middle Spelling Bee, Carlin Ricatelli was the fifth-grade champ; Noah Holdridge was the sixth-grade champ; Devin Holt was the seventh-grade champ and school winner; and Mitchell Harrison was the eighth-grade champ and runner-up. Then at the Center Middle School Spelling Bee, Joshua Huberubia was fifth-grade champ; Catherine O'Hora was the sixth-grade champ; Jackson Shope was the seventh-grade champ; and Daniel Torillo was the eighth-grade champ. And the overall Spelling Bee champ was Jackson Shope.
Those Spelling Bee champs at the middle schools will get to participate at the Vindicator Spelling Bee down at YSU, so that's a nerve-wracking, exciting time for those kids. And a whole bunch of those kids and their parents were the crowd that made up the attendance at the school board meeting. We got to shake their hands.
All right. Now, here is a list of upcoming events. Tuesday, March 3rd at 7:00 p.m., the BHS eighth-grade parent orientation Tuesday, March 3rd at 7:00 PM, the BHS eighth-grade parent orientation in the Boardman Performing Arts Center. Wednesday, March 4th at 7:00 PM, the BHS winter band concert in the B-PAC. Sunday, March 15th at noon, BHS band and St. Patrick's Day Parade. Friday, March 20th at 7:00 PM, BHS Project Mayhem concert in the Boardman Performing Arts Center. Monday, March 23rd, 7:00 PM, Board of Education meeting, Market Street Elementary. Tuesday, March 24th at 7:00 PM, BHS Jazz Fest in the B-PAC. Saturday, March 28th at 10:00 AM, BHS Arts and Craft fundraiser in the cafeteria and gym.
There's always so much going on in our schools. We can't list them all.
Mrs. Poma, what reports were discussed during the school board meeting?
We usually end our meeting with reports from different people throughout the district. I serve as legislatively as on this year, so it's a busy time for our legislators. They're back in session at the state level, and the budget bill is being considered. And the budget bill affects public education strongly, so we're watching that. Our treasurer, Rich Santilli, also gave us a biennium budget report. So both of those were just keeping us informed of what cuts and changes we might see in funding. Also, there are a number of bills that are introduced addressing charter schools and accountability, so that was interesting to watch. Mr. Lazari presents to us policy revisions. One of the board's main responsibilities is to adopt and manage policy for the district. And Ohio Revised Code changes constantly, so that causes changes in our policies. It's a two-month process. This was first read of about a dozen, and we'll vote on those next month. And then we heard from Center Middle School, I believe. Gina Stevens is the cheerleading coach there, and she approached the board with some changes in how we may form teams this year. They were creative, changes, kid-centered. It will give the girls more opportunity to participate in cheerleading, so we can get more kids involved, and they can cheer and participate in other sports if they're interested and not have to worry about conflicts.
Oh, nice.
So that'll be a nice change this spring.
All right. And were there any final comments by Board President, Mr. Davis?
Not really. Mr. Davis spoke to us a little bit about having a spring workshop. We try to have quarterly workshops as a board on a Saturday afternoon where we just have the chance to discuss some planning and other matters in more detail. And then we did go into executive session to discuss some legal matters protected by HIPAA. So that was our meeting.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for joining us today, Mrs. Poma.
You're welcome.
And sharing with our viewers the closer look at the February Board of Education meeting. Congratulations again to Boardman High School students for receiving awards in the PTSA Reflections contest. Kudos go out to the BHS Ocean Bowl team under the leadership of Coach Heather Moran. Congratulations again to Spelling Bee winners at both Center Middle and Glenwood Middle Schools. Special congratulations to school Spelling Bee champs, Devon Holt from Glenwood Middle School and Jackson Shope from Center Middle. Check out our Boardman Schools website for further details on all upcoming events. A reminder that our March Board of Education meeting will be held at Market Street Elementary on Monday, March 23rd at 7:00 PM. This is Miranda Canacci for BSTN. Let's keep striving for excellence.